All right, let's see the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have a forum Stephanie Mundy with us this evening, but we're still good there. Any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, look for motion to accept the regular agenda as is.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Make some motion, Jeff does the second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries consent agenda, any changes or questions on that?
I guess I haven't noticed a social media archive feed before. Did we? Is that our first time ever having that?
We did that within the budget amendment there.
Okay.
But yes, it's new.
I don't think I was here at the.
It basically backs up to help protect us in case somebody able to delete things from social media.
Okay. Otherwise, that's all I had. So if nobody else has anything, I can make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we make some motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, any changes to the city council minutes from last time around? Any additions? Those who look for motion to accept them as is.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Public comment. Hey, you got anything you want to chit chat about tonight? Ron, you're quiet. Okay. Moving along. Sheriff's update.
So, got the numbers from Brandon. We had lots of calls. Thought they were a lot more traffic going on. I know we had Seabelt and D Y overtime guys that picked up hours that they came in, they spent a lot of it in Horace, so that was good. We had a couple like headliner type calls. We had the supposedly missing person that was outside the horse farm out there on Hall Avenue. And we, we had people on foot and we had drones up and we found out later in the morning that she was in Morhead the whole time. So that was, you know, all those things.
Yep.
And then the missing dog state, we've gotten a lot of traction in the area. I know there's been people out looking and there's still people out looking. So we're, I mean, it's one of these where we can only do so much. I know we had some questions from the public. Well, why didn't you like do a canine track on a dog? And I had to explain to them that when we train our dogs, we train them to ignore dog odor.
Right.
Because when they track, they track people.
Right.
The only thing they're trained to do is that's the only thing I want them to find is people. So no, we don't want you to track a dog because that's, that's not what we're there to do most of the time. So.
Yeah, makes sense.
Lot of social media and everything around that. And I, I know at this point it's still a large, so I don't, I don't know what to tell them. That's about all I got.
So otherwise, nothing unusual?
No, we didn't. We, uh, we had that little, you know, flare up of trailer and construction burglaries that they had the last month.
Right.
And then this month, they didn't continue. I know that they, they did take a suspect into custody that they thought was involved in multiple burglies in the area. Like there were some here, there were some in Leonard, there were some in Kindred. And the guy ended up turning himself in at the information office in South Park. So that's good. Then hopefully the person that was doing that stuff is already charged for this.
Yep, that's good.
Other than that, I don't have much else.
Okay.
I think this is, this might be my last meeting.
Might be or will be.
Whoa.
Uh, I might if, as long as I don't have any conflicts with my new community in January. I'll try to come to January's to talk about December numbers if Craig, you know, can.
Gotcha, okay.
Depends on our scheduling and stuff. Cause I'll have another community by next month.
Who's taking your spot here?
I know Carson Quam, uh, he's gonna come down here and it'll be him and Craig. And I know, I, I can't confirm on whether the third is coming in January. I have no idea. I, I, they don't tell me that stuff. They just say train the dog and it's like.
You don't get the memo.
So, so we're losing our canine?
Yeah, canine won't be specific to Horace anymore. He'll, that's probably good because I, I feel bad a lot of the time. Cause other people, they, they cover for me to get hours down here because I have to go for training and deployments and stuff like that. So I miss time that I'm, you know, allotted to, to, to the city. So it'll actually be better so that way I'm not missing any time for the town to get a dog.
Right.
I'll still be around. It's, it's close enough to the metro to where the Rip Raff, it, it doesn't have a, doesn't have a border.
Well, we thoroughly enjoyed you and Riggs. Thank you for all you've done for us.
It's been good.
Appreciate that.
I had a good time, so. I ain't going anywhere. I'll, I'll still be around.
Great.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Do you know that the county approved, the commission approved the third deputy position today?
And that's why I don't know if anything happened or not.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Anything I say take with a great assault because I, I'm usually the last to know. Like, oh hey, did you know that?
No, nobody told me anything, so.
Yep, aside, I'll check.
I, I, I heard rumblings. Maybe that's the best way to put it. I heard.
Fair enough.
It's, it's in the works.
I was supposed to go to the county commission this afternoon.
Yeah.
So I've just been here. If it was approved or not, I assume it would be approved, but.
Yeah, we'll find out. All right, anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Enjoy your Christmas.
Thank you.
Brent, you're gonna be able to keep this next one within a reasonable timeframe, correct?
I'll try to keep it quick.
Good, good, good.
Okay, so what you have before you is a spreadsheet here, um, identifying the capital improvement program projects. So tonight, I just wanted to touch base on the C I P. Make sure you have a copy of this. Uh, it was originally going to ask for council action, but I decided let's hold off on that. That way you have time to digest it more. Touch base with each, with the council members. I have not been able to touch base with Councilor Landstrom. She's been out home there. Uh, but once I, when she's back, then I can sit down with her and touch base about the C I P. The projects here, it covers twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Really, when you get to twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, those are more planning than anything. It's just saying, hey, these are on our radar. Twenty-four is, if you have to pick one here to pay attention to, obviously twenty-four is the one to focus the most on. Uh, this does not account for developments. The reason why it's been good is we're playing this together. We don't have the petition for improvements or the, or if we do have a petition for improvements and we said district up, we don't have the estimated cost yet for those local developments yet. So local developments, or developments, local projects like that are not included in the C I P. Ones that we are aware of, potential regional and/or city led type projects are reflected in here. Some of these are connected to developments, but like I said, they're not the, they would be more the regional ones. Pretty much all your bigger projects will go directly as an individual project to city council. Your smaller ones may come to council individually or they're tackled within the budget. When I'm looking at like, say like a water line cleaning or something like that where their fund would be, say like a highway fund or something like that, then they may go through if they're budget, within the budget, they may be addressed during that. Uh, however, for the most part, you're gonna see each individual project come to you when we're ready to start them. Some of these you have already seen, uh, where we've started discussing, for example, at one of our last meetings, we talked about sixty-fourth avenue, seventeen to sixty-six. So we've talked about that, set a district for that. So we're taking steps forward. The overlays, for example, a lot of those overlays you've already seen. We talked about them a couple of months ago. We didn't get them knocked out here this fall for getting done. So they're gonna be done, our plan is to do those next year. So that's why you see them on twenty-four. So, um, yeah, we, and actually another one here, Eighth Avenue Extension, Cairo Seventeen East. And then Ubetcha Drive, Four Willie Seventh Street. Those are other projects we've already started the process, engaged council with. So you know what we have going on there. Now, the estimate, or these project costs, I sat down with Jim and Joel from our staff. Sit down with them multiple times going over, okay, what do we know about these potential projects? Where are the costs? This is our best estimate that we could do at this, that we have at this time. So when we do get into the projects, like the engineer report and all that, we'll be able to refine these costs more. Uh, but these are our best estimates that we have at this time. Also, the breakout, so how they're funded. I tried to follow a very similar split or basically the same split that we've had. So seventy-five, twenty-five split for cost sharing. Projects that have more of a regional impact or hit neighborhoods a little harder. Examples would be like Wall Avenue, sixty-six, Chestnut Ironwood. Tried to follow that same approach throughout the C I P. So as reflected here. And then under sales tax and prairie dog. In twenty twenty-five, we anticipate that we'd be in the next bracket for prairie dog funds, which the base goes up from half a million dollars to two point five million dollars. Then your growth factoring, we anticipate would be at least that two point five also, since our growth factoring right now is slightly above the base. On average, that would give us around two and a half, three million dollars a year. It might be a little bit more. It's hard to say for sure. However, we anticipate that will kick in twenty twenty-five. So a lot of what you see under sales tax or prairie dog, especially as you get twenty-five or later, it kind of interchangeable at this time. And we'll work with whatever is available. If we have prairie dog funds on hand, we'll use that. Otherwise, we have sales tax. And keep in mind too, if a project hits, say twenty twenty-five, that's the way to do it. By the time the whole bill is due, it might not be for another year or two later. So you may have funds catch up. If we're able, if we have sales tax dollars, for example, of prairie dog available, we may choose to put those towards the project upfront and not have to bond all that money. But we do have flexibility. So just cause it shows the project twenty-five doesn't mean that we're, we don't have the funds. It's just that we may bond it and then have the funds a year or two later when the bill is due for that. So, and then we may not, at that point then have to permanently bond the cost shares. So since we do a temporary bond, we can clean that up with a permanent bond. Any questions?
I got a question on.
Sorry, I've kind of covered a lot there, so.
Ninth Street, um, Jim, have you been in contact with West Fargo to try to coordinate that? Um, if we have a project on Ninth Street where it shuts it down, is that gonna cause traffic concerns?
It's a dead end right now. We have talked about it numerous times, just not super recently. Just all the burglaries have been our conduit for that discussion.
Okay.
And that section of road would be, there's no road right now. So it wouldn't interfere with West Fargo's, your traffic from West Fargo or Horace going up that way.
Okay.
Are they, are they looking at eventually doing a bridge there to bridge the gap? Because right now, I mean, I see Wall up to Seventy-S sixth and then Seventy-S sixth up, but there's that big drain through veterans, right? I've ran up.
Oh, you're talking fifty-ninth or fifty.
Up by Fifty-Second.
Veterans Boulevard.
Yep.
I believe they had that.
It's not on their, they're not.
It's not.
It's not a priority right now.
Not a priority.
They have, there's a corridor study that Veterans is done on veterans in Fifty-Ninth, but, um, it, it's not from what I gathered. Right now.
We're a couple of years out before we get there looking at this. I just, I want to coordinate that so that we don't just go to, do all this work and then go to a dead end. It would make sense if we time that so that it coincides with whatever work they're doing with the bridge.
Yeah, we had a, we had a meeting that was scheduled for maybe three weeks ago with Fargo and they got bumped for some, something came up. And we just happened to reinitiate that. We're gonna wait till after the first of the year. Same with the Castro, or the Water Resource Board. And we reached out to them to get some of the drink twenty-seventh and some Cheyenne projects. And their engineers out of country, or out of the state for, till the end of the year. So we're just gonna pick that stuff back up in January.
We have some time. Just general comments.
And just so you know, to, the council knows, for Veterans Boulevard or Fifty-Seventh, Fifty-Ninth.
Fifty-Seventh.
Fifty-Seventh.
Jeff was talking about Ninth, right?
I was talking about Ninth.
Yeah, you were talking Ninth. So Fifty-Seventh, our priority area is really from Wall Avenue to Seventy-Sixth.
Yep.
To get that built up. Right now, it's just a field road.
Right.
If that would be to get built up, that would probably be the first section of road of that to actually get paved. Because you do get quite a bit of traffic that goes out Wall Avenue.
Yep.
And then they shoot down to Hundred, or they'll go, keep going to gravel to Forty-Fifth and go up Forty-Fifth. So that was the first.
Is that that minimum maintenance, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Oh, that bloody mess every day.
That's the first section. Also with Cub Creek Development Editions.
Yep.
They're out there. That's probably gonna be driven, also development driven at some point. But we do have that on the project, on the list here. Then it would be probably widening out, uh, that section from sixty-fourth to Seventy-Sixth.
Right.
So that's why the project cost isn't as high. It's more just dirtwork, gravel, put a base down, prep it, get it ready to where then you're just doing the asphalt. But Fifty-Seventh or Veterans is gonna be one of those that we work our way up.
Got it.
Because we'll be having to partner with Fargo. Half of that road is Fargo and half is ours.
Okay.
So we've talked with Fargo and off over the last couple of years about that being, and that was part of the intention of the corridor. So you guys can very tell, okay, what do those roads look like long-term and when do we start tackling them? So, um, other questions?
Yeah, so I know we're not taking like any action on this tonight, but when we take an action, what exactly are you looking for? Because, I mean, I'm assuming that the C I P could evolve and change, um, as projects come up for the future. You know, I just was thinking that this was like a tool for us as council to be able to understand the bigger picture and.
So the C I P basically acts, it's like, it's a plain document.
Yeah.
It gives, it's giving your path to say, okay, these are the projects we intend on tackling. However, your follow-through to make them happen, you're going to see on an individual basis.
Right, so what would we have?
Updating this, we could do those either through just C I P, just amendments. Uh, I'll compare it to like MetroCog. So if Jeff sees MetroCog, they have the transportation program, which is like a C I P. Bill them in that quarterly.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. Now, do I think we're gonna do it quarterly? It's hard to say right now. Uh, but probably once a year or every other, or twice a year, once or twice a year, we'll probably have to do some amendments to this or update it to just add the most current cost.
So when you're looking for an action for the C I P, is it just to approve what you have so far?
List, here's what we're planning for projects moving forward. But keep in mind, the C I P is a fluid document. So it is going to be evolving.
Yeah.
Frequently.
And so.
It's saying, yep, let's move forward with this.
Okay.
That's our plan. And then it also helps us quite a bit at the staff level, just continuing to be preparing for, okay, what projects are we planning for, for the next year.
So the individual projects that are listed would still come to us as council?
Just like we do.
Like we normally do?
Yep, just like we do right now. This is just so they need to say, hey, we have a plan now.
Yeah, I like this being laid out so that we have a better idea.
And this will help us too, especially dealing with, uh, well, forecasting, Matt and I forecast, you know, okay, how are we saying, where are we looking at for funds?
Funding.
Funding, it'll help us with that because then we could show to places where grants, saying, we've been thinking about this project or we plan this project. I would love to have another list that would call it more like the elective list. It's basically your wish list. Saying, we recognize there's eventually gonna be a need for these, but unless there's grant funding or something else available, it's on the back burner, but we don't want to forget about it. So those are other projects on the road, but we're not there yet for those. Um, and then it also helps us when, with our bonding, cause we're able to show places like Moody's and Vessar saying, this is our plan moving forward. They kind of have an idea of what to expect. I really wish I could show developments, but I'd really be just grasping at straws, trying to say, here's how much we're looking at bonding for developments in the next year. Cause Jase has a whole flurry of them coming at us. It's just not, and you've seen some of those too. It's, uh, I just don't have costs at all from those. So we're not there yet. I wish we did. So, and that's why we kept those out.
So one other question for you. I saw, I see in the twenty twenty-four, we got the flush to Fargo project. So is that something that we're gonna try and complete in twenty twenty, it's twenty twenty-five, right? That's over shoot for, okay, just so we're on.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yep.
So it'd be a start.
Pipes in the ground is what we.
It's gonna be a lot.
So start twenty-four, finish twenty-five.
Yeah, we got a plan on it.
There's, there's, with the funding sources and the planning and everything, we need to start, it's gonna take longer than just a six, seven month.
That's I just turned, more for everybody's awareness that pipes in the ground in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Yep. We all, we do have, uh, I know the media asked, you brought this up when we were talking before on this one, was the wire tower. It is adapted in twenty twenty-six. So we do have that on, on here. That does help us. We're then, we're seeking dollars out of the State Water Commission. That is one of those prime examples where we've been trying to get grant funds. Obviously, it would be wise for us to seek out the grant funds whenever possible. So that's one we do anticipate to show for, for, seek out grant funds for. Flush to Fargo, we still continue to try to push for, um, grant funds on that one. And if we don't, if we aren't able to secure grant funds, we can still look forward to the project by doing S R F loan, the state revolving loan fund. That's a low interest loan. And then we borrow against the utility, which does help us, gives us ability to still make those projects happen. So there's options. Um, and that's why it's shown under sewer funds right now. And then if we need to, then we can move it over to grants if we lock in a grant.
You, you just sparked something in my brain, Brenton. Um, I remember when we talked about the water tower, that I had mentioned this water tower out here that's, you know, become a landmark in Horus. And we had talked about adding in, upgrading, painting, doing things like that. Are we still planning on doing that? I don't see.
So we have a mixer in there. We did that.
Where is a mixer?
That's part of the water project. We have.
Which, where is it in?
That's not even.
It's already made a start yet.
It's in the water tower.
Done.
Oh, okay.
It was part of the water project.
Yeah.
But we also have a project with S R F. We're painting it and some safety upgrades and some other things that McGuire Iron has requested for it. So I don't know, I'm not sure where it's at in the.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't have that.
Put it on this. I just want to, I want to make sure that's a priority because that's been a part of our community for a while. And if, you know, if it makes sense to save it and, and upgrade it and make it look nice, I would like to do that. So, okay, cool.
That would be a question for the council. If you would like us to look into adding and painting the water tower, is something we can do. To give you a general ballpark, and I'm just giving you a general ballpark, if I remember correctly, was it around a hundred grand?
It wasn't. It was a couple of hundred thousand, I think is what it was.
Yeah, around a hundred, a hundred fifty.
It's rusty and dated and, you know, it's a, it's a landmark in our community. It's in almost every picture on our city webpages. And just about every engineering drone flyover, I thought it might make sense to do something nice.
Is that something of interest to, hey, as for the rest of council there, would you like us to add this in for the draft for January? We could play it for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. It's a very simple project. Would be being the water tower. If you do just the basic kind of like we have right now, that's where you're more around that hundred thousand, if I remember correctly. If you paint it with the.
Do you see our logo on there?
It's going to cost more. It probably costs a couple of hundred thousand to do it with the city logo on there.
We have a beautiful new logo and I drove into Morhead and I saw their water tower and went, wow. I mean, it's really, really nice looking. We don't have to go crazy, crazy, but something maybe in the middle?
Yeah, I'd prefer not to go not so on, on it, but I want it to look nice. I, I just, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to do anything super crazy like they did in Fargo. Bright blue and color. I don't think we need to do anything that extravagant.
Something, something simple.
If you were to do something more significant like that, I would suggest to do something like that on a new water tower.
Right, I don't.
Existing one. If you were to do something on this one.
Kind of a waste of funds.
If you did something on here, it'd be, my suggestion for you is consider it, either like what you have here, give it a facelift. If you want to paint a different color, you can. Uh, very common to have whites or like the light blue like we have. If you do darker colors in that, then it starts getting hot, like in summertime, things like that.
I'm almost thinking we should just give it a facelift where it's currently at, cause that's what everybody knows the tower as, that color. Or just, we'd be updating it to, it looks better. We get rid of the rust.
If you did anything more than just saying Horus on it, I would say my suggestion, you would consider the logo, that's about as much as I would suggest for you. I mean, if you have other ideas, it wants something different you can, but.
No, just, you know, keep it looking nice. I mean, we're dressing up our downtown. We got plans for some other things going on here. I know our, our main corridors are looking really nice and, you know, just making Horus a nice place aesthetically is important. And it's been needing it for some time anyway, just for functionality wise. So I think it makes sense, update, do some of the security updates, do some of the internals and whatnot. It's a pretty easy way to not have to look at adding yet another water tower down the road. We could utilize existing if we maintain it, save some dollars long-term.
We will need the capacity of the water tower.
I, I understand the second one. We will need the capacity, but this could still be a backup. There could still be a number of things. It's very convenient being right next to the fire hall.
It'll be a little bridge.
Right.
What it is, it's not, doesn't have that many gallons, so it doesn't.
It's better than nothing.
Yeah, no, I said, we use it as we can.
Right.
Are there any other questions about this? If you do have any other questions, comments, concerns that comes to your mind, please let me know. I'd be more than happy to sit down with anybody on this to go over any of the areas that we're thinking. And like I said, keep an eye to, this just shows how we get from point A to point B. It's gonna, it's probably one of your more fluid documents you have. And we show a layout of saying, okay, the costs may be here and here. We refine it with the actual costs, the estimates we have once we're moving forward with the project. And then also some of these things like between prairie dog sales tax can change. Same thing from water sewer could may go over to the sales tax. It just depends on availability of funds and how we, how we're able to shuffle things around if we need to. So, yep. Okay. So I have on C I P then.
Anything else? Kim, we got the next one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor of council. Um, some time ago, Southdale Farms Sixth Edition was brought to the city council. The plat was approved at that time. The district was created for that project. And this next step was the improvement district for those improvements. Um, the draft agreement was drafted by the city attorney. There is a provision in there for a landscape, um, installation of the landscape buffer will be done in conjunction with the improvements. So if you remember this, it's adjacent to another existing larger lot subdivision in Horus. And the question was brought up as kind of a buffer between the two subdivisions, between the newer higher density and then the, uh, more existing larger density houses. So, um, since that time, or I should say, Southdale Farms was kind of, wasn't necessarily paused, but it was understood that it wasn't gonna be able to be constructed until Sixty-S sixth Street was done. So not a whole lot happened with that over the, over the last year. So now that Seventieth Street and Benji Lane are, are done and Sixty-S sixth Street is constructed up to Seventieth, um, we can keep moving forward on this project. So, um, with that being said, this is a draft agreement. Lucas can chime in if he, if he hears anything I say wrong. But I think the only thing that we need to, uh, address is this installation of the landscape buffer. So Sixty-S sixth Street project did install a fence along Sixty-S sixth Street. And then there was a change order to install a fence along the north side of the existing subdivision to the south of where this is performed. So the question that I have for you is, is the landscape buffer necessary? And does it need to be, um, in this agreement that it needs to be installed along with that, with those improvements?
Yeah, the, the intent of that was simply to have some sort of a buffer. It could be a landscape buffer. It could be a fence. It could be anything. So as long as we have one of the above, I do believe that it's okay to eliminate the landscape discussion regarding a buffer because that was amended by a change order.
The residents are satisfied. I've talked to several and they seem to be happy with that.
Is there a fence here?
Yes, there is.
Right here and then down here.
Okay.
So it, in essence, separates from any of the new, there's, these parcels are open. That will be new development. And this new development, this was the concern, having all these people in one person's backyard. And so this person talked to me and said, we need. And so this person talked to me and said, we need to do something with buffering, and I was fine with that.
Okay.
So the council was fine with that. I really appreciated them taking that into consideration, especially around some of these new developments. I know we've done it for a couple other developments. And it's a source of heartache when you have smaller lots and you've got, you know, four lots in your backyard. It's, you got a lot of eyes looking in on you, so it's, it's nice that people were willing to consider that buffer. So any of the above was acceptable, so I believe that language can be removed now unless anyone here disagrees.
Well, thank, yeah, that's fine.
So Lucas, I don't know if you can hear, was there anything else we needed to address with this agreement? I think I hit what, what we had talked about at the staff level as far as what needed to be done. So we would just need a motion removing the requirement of the installation of the landscape buffer with the Southdale Farms six improvements, correct?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really all there is to it. Otherwise, everything else in the agreement is just our boilerplate provisions on it. Jim's cost of the project is three point three four one million dollars. The letter of credit that's going to be required based on the city's standard of excluding the soft costs and doing sixty five percent of the cost equals one million eight hundred nine thousand six hundred dollars. Other special provisions that were in here, as Jim mentioned, we need to, we'll remove the, the language to the buffer. I'll just include it in there that the council originally approved that, but then a fence got added and that satisfied that requirement. So really, I'll just change that language myself. And then land dedication, developer agrees to contribute eighty seven thousand two hundred twenty dollars and ninety cents as payment in lieu of land dedication for Southdale Farms sixth edition. Water service will be provided by Cass World. Waste water service for the development will be provided by the city. A sanitary sewer lift station and forest main were constructed on lot one, block two of Southdale Farms first edition. Storm sewer.
That, that lift station encompasses sixth, fully?
Yes, little bit, a little bit, not all of it, but yes, sixth edition.
Storm sewer, there's a denture pond itself, the first edition. So the, the water, storm water will flow to that. The landscaping standard is what Jim already addressed. And then we reference in there access, because access to this development was a big deal when it was first being approved. So we just wanted to keep reference that in there, saying that, is it sixty six Jim is being constructed right now?
Yep.
Yeah, so that, that reference in there saying that part of it's done, not all of it's done, but it's, it's in the process. So other than that, everything else is, is, so if anyone has any questions, please let me know what the big thing was, the, the landscape buffer.
I don't have any further questions regarding this. I may recommend a stop sign there coming out of Southdale Sixth, hold on.
Seventy, it's, it's on Seventieth. It's in the plans for the overlay.
Good, because there's no stop sign there and I've seen more near misses there than I can shake a stick at. And once they start with heavy trucks in there, I don't want a young family to get nailed.
So once we, once the detour was set up for the roundabout, people went that way and it didn't take very long for us to get noticed that somebody had almost gotten hit there. So there were temporary signs put up for the construction for that work. And then we have in the overlays of the Southdale Farms third edition to put a stop sign.
Right here, if you come up, see this road here? And these are all outlets onto sixty sixth. Right on Seventieth, there's a stop sign here, but there's no stop sign here. And this is a detour, right? And so people have been almost getting clipped here. I've seen three different incidences myself that were very close calls. One of them was almost me, so I think that we should take a look at stop signing this because this goes straight out to Seventeen. Any of these outlets that go to Seventeen should have a stop sign there.
There's no stop sign between Seventeen, kind of seventeen and sixty six street, so. You think of a four way, we were thinking of just putting on the north south road.
North, the north south road, sixty seventh.
Yep, that's where.
Is the one that's a big concern because we got a lot of trucks coming.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, sixty seven to seventy.
Just on the north south road would make sense.
That's what I thought too.
Just so somebody has the right of way there and the other people stop because there's.
It's not one of those things where you feel it. You drive it off of sixty six and you cut across, you just feel like there should be a stop somewhere.
Right. That was my only concern, especially with all these new houses coming, somebody's gonna get clipped.
Okay.
All right, so you wanted a motion, Jim?
I think we have a motion to approve the I D agreement and remove the landscape buffer requirement.
Yes.
Correct, Lucas?
Yeah, that'll work.
Motion to approve the I D agreement and remove the landscape buffer requirement.
Okay, Jerry makes a motion, can I get a second?
I will second.
Can I get a second? All right, home paper, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, Jimmy, get that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have water sewer storm street improvement district, twenty twenty three dash three, which is U Vetch Drive. We talked about this during the C I P. Brent said that these projects are in the process, so we've approved the district, his next step was to the engineer's report. We have that here, we talk about the existing, the introduction and the existing conditions. Planning guidance, this is a residential collector street, we talk about the closed improvements. We've got a sanitary sewer that'll come off of the Vista Lift Station and extend north off of, north along the corridor. Water main, and we have already have a water main connecting Vista's to the city or to Fourth Street. So we'll have crossings of the water main and then fire hydrants along there. Storm sewer mains, laterals, catch spaces, manholes, clear water collection, concrete paving, surfaced streets with curb and gutter. They'll probably be able, there will be a transition section since the Vista's is not curb and gutter, but we need to get it down to where it needs to be. Sidewalk on one side, a multi-use path on the other, this is a seventy foot dedicated right of way. The last time where we did sidewalk shared use path on both sides, we had a hundred feet of dedicated right of way, so we're a little bit cozier on this one. But we're not, we don't recommend a center turn lane on this one because there's just not, it's only gonna go from Lagoons to Seventh or Park to Seventh. It doesn't have that longer run. And a neighborhood commercial kind of fits the bill for that. Two, four, we have two fourteen foot lanes with curb and gutter, so be very similar to kind of the Wall Avenue. We're looking at putting in turn, turn lanes and a couple of the spots into the Sparks Edition, but we have some right of way concerns. So if we're during the design, we'll put together and see if it's actually justified to have the turn lanes and the passing lanes in there, but it's kind of congested. So that's why you'll see in here that there's a sidewalk on one side and a multi-use path on the other. Obviously seating, hydro, mulching and street lighting. Attachments to this report, there's a location map, which is already gone through, a district boundary map, which has already been gone through. A typical street section, preliminary utility layout. Probably the more important thing is opinion of probable cost. So our opinion of probable cost on this project is with all costs included, a little bit over four million dollars. So this one is assessed to the area bounded on the north by Park, Vista's in the south, Seventeen and Drain twenty seven. If you go to the end of the report, Mr. Hellman, you'll see that we have a, a breakdown of the special assessments. These are preliminary and I made preface as to why they're preliminary.
We, we don't have.
Yeah, we don't have a packet, so we're just taking your word for it.
Okay.
We didn't get it.
Okay, whatever.
Don't quite. It sounds great, Jim.
Well. You don't have the report? No. Okay, so why this was tricky to put together preliminary assessments was Eldorado Platte has been brought to the city council and it's been approved, but it hasn't been recorded. Sparks Edition has been brought to the city council, it's been approved, but it hasn't been recorded. And the Sparks Edition also just started going through the process again last Tuesday with the planning and zoning commission to increase some right of way on the Nelson Drive. So we had to take some liberties and we kind of had to go through some things. Here's a crude, Alice didn't even do you any good. So the way that we decided to preliminarily assess this, because it is important to know, is using the special assessment policy that a collector road would be a, an each, and that's what, and that's what I did. But we get to the point where we've got, in this district, we have commercial, trailer court, single family, public facility, R six, and we have ag and industrial, so we kind of run the gamut. So the way we factored it was that we did it according to the policy, so a single family is one per unit, pretty simple. We can count the ones on Third, Three, Fourth Street, Nelson, one, 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 right? Trailer court, one per trailer. Multi-family residential, which is R five, was one per unit. Public, which constitutes parks, ponds and other city property. So this has got the city maintaining the new public works facility on it. It's got a potential for a large section on the racetrack, as we've talked about before, for some public facilities along there. And that was, has a preliminary, based on five units per acre. So this is where we get into that load factoring. We don't have any churches, we don't have any schools, we have industrial, which is twenty five per acre, and commercial, which is fifty per acre. So we didn't take into account anything as far as a city contribution to the project by reducing it by a quarter or anything like that. So we're looking at a single family around five thousand dollars, maybe just a little bit more than that. Now, remember that this isn't going to be the end all be all, but we have to have somewhere to start from. And that's what I did. I spent a lot of time trying to go through the, this and figure out, you know, what, what makes the most sense, what's not gonna scare everybody off? Because that's a concern of mine, is just blanketing something and just saying, this is what it's gonna be, when that's not the case. So there's gonna have to be some, or there will be some discussion had as if that benefit decreases the further away from it you get. But being that it's a collector road, as per the comp plan, it fits a larger district and it fits that each method with the load factoring that the, that the policy has.
I want to ask a question.
I thought we were going to work on the commercial.
He, he's going off of what he has right now.
Are we fixing that before we?
Basically like what he's talking about.
It would be fixed, it, it could be fixed before this is all said and done. This, this locks nothing in, this is just something to put out to you guys that, that this is what it could very well be.
What was the agreement on that? I wasn't available during that meeting for the commercial. Right now, we're at fifty.
For special assessment?
Yes.
It would be, we're basically going back to review the policy, we'll be.
I don't think we've actually made a determination.
On the previous ones, it's like you're going for your notes there, no. If you remind me, Jim, how we did, but I believe they ended up, it's almost half of it was originally.
It was.
Instead of a.
I thought we dropped that down once.
It was dropped down considerably. And I, we had the discussion of if we wanted to do that with this project and I chose not to do it, just because it's not a set standard. It was that project and that project was started before the policy anywhere got close to being done. So I wanted to have something that this is what it is, so. So you mentioned, a couple of these plots have not been recorded yet, what's the significance of that? Well, we have the right of way on paper, but not in the real world. We don't have the line work for it and we're not guaranteed that that's what they're going to record. I mean, just because they're approved. We've seen some where they've been approved and never been recorded. So I'm also wondering about, because you said we had ag land in here, is that encompass that ag land? So the ag land I used based on the future land use map of the comp plan. So if you could blow that up, let's kind of go start with, let's start on the, let's do it in quarters. So start in the upper, upper west side, upper east side. Okay, so you'll see this is the area where there is current residence right now, that Cheyenne Trailer Court and all those residents around there. There's city hall, which is classified as a public, public building, other city property. There's the maintenance shop, the other open lot that the city has, and then there's a kind of a probably miss, a miss zoned, single family right now that maybe doesn't act that way. And then we've got to the left there, south of the trailer court, we've got, all that is commercial, the C three. So that's where we get the fifty per acre, which is a big number when you're planning each. So if you move over, if you go down, go down, we get to the area around the racetrack, as we've talked about. And we had ag land on the two left, two left parcels, and we had R six on the right for the two there. And the ag is fifty per acre and the R six is five per acre. We had talked through our discussions that that fifty per acre, that stuff along Seventeen is probably gonna be more along the lines of a commercial type, mixed use commercial. So if you go, those blocks in there are just, those blocks are what we drew in there just to kind of delineate the number of parcels. So we took the master plan and the Sparks Platte that was approved and counted up the number of parcels that are in those blocks. And that's how we came up with those, those numbers there. As far as, I'll drive. When we get up to, up to, closer to the Lagoons, those are obviously public facility, they fall in the line with, they fall in line with that. This parcel here, new public works facility, that falls in line with policy. And then these are all large lot, single, single family. So these are all based on the Eldorado Platte, platte that was presented and never recorded because of some kind of covenants that need to be recorded as a condition of the platte. So this was not, their front footage was not used, area was not used, area was used with the, with the, as per the policy. But one to one within each for a collector street that this is, this is.
So is this being presented as preliminary, subject to change, or?
This is very much so preliminary, subject to change. This is a go around addit, because the city has long been criticized for not getting assessment numbers done sooner, sooner, sooner.
Right.
So this was part of the policy.
You're supposed to do that anyways, it's part of the, establishing the engineer report.
Agreed, but it, it used to be like number of lots divided by thing, and the policy has made that, can't do that anymore. It's gotta be more, more dialed in. And that's where I kind of stick my neck out a little bit, that some of this is gonna come to fruition. You know, that what they say, because the load factoring is based on, on the zoning of it. So if you go to, if, when you get this, which I apologize for, I didn't know that you didn't have it, this is what the equivalent, this is what the units are. So this one's gonna be fifty per acre, five per acre, five per acre, five per acre, twenty four each. So I guess I should have probably had to put the, the tag on there once, what? But that's how we came to be with this.
I appreciate the transparency on that, it gives me a clear picture. I can look and see the numbers and tell if it's public facilities, if it's industrial, if it's ag, if it's, you know, residential, okay.
Yep, so if you remember, this was a platte, not a platte, this was a petition project. The district was drawn probably larger, or was drawn larger than those who petitioned for it, but the petitioners have the majority of it by a pretty significant amount. So with that being said, however, the guidance comes from a special assessment commission with city council on these, on these existing. Further discussion has to be had on that, but we need to go through the exercise of the report and then going through these special assessments so we can keep things, keep things moving along. This project is important in the fact that without that one, Eldorado has no way in or out, so they're a petitioner for it. And Sparks needs this road, Seventh to come on, I believe it's Luther. Luther, Luther Boulevard or Drive, whatever that one is. So this is very integral to, to these two areas being, being developed. So obviously Sparks signed the petition, these guys signed the petition, it's just these peripheral ones. And then you'll get to the Lagoons where by the policy they are to be assessed, but in the past, city council, the special assessment commission has had a little harder special assessing city lots, especially ponds. So just keep that in your mind.
Definitely, okay.
So.
Any more questions, Jim?
Are you gonna send this out so we actually get a copy? Yeah, absolutely, I'll do it, I'll do it in the morning when I get back.
And you're, you're not.
Well, actually, you can dump it in Teams right now. Darn right we will.
There's no concern with the fact that we haven't had anything recorded with the other, with the Sparks and the Eldorado?
So we've had some discussions with the, with the developers representative on, say, Eldorado and the covenants. That's the one thing that's holding up, that being. That's the one thing that's holding up, that being recorded, and those were supposed to be started here last week or middle of December. So this is a pretty good-sized project, meaning over four million dollars, so we need to keep it moving forward, rather than just sit on it for another month and then pick it back up. It's going to put us, put us out of sync for getting it done next year, is what my concern is, so.
But you're not worried we're going to miss something, because?
As far as the assessments are proposed, or?
Anything in general?
No, I, I don't think so, because the only thing that they can record is what's been approved by everyone, unless something were to happen where the covenants weren't adequate, or I, I, I'm not sure how that all shook out, then it may not get recorded. And then hopefully, the, the right-of-way on Nelson Drive works itself out in a relatively quicker manner in the first, Sparks' first edition, so.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, Jim, so you want us to do the resolution approving preliminary engineering report?
I would, yes.
So, do you want to make a motion to do that?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary engineering report, just so people know that it is absolutely preliminary.
Okay, kind of motion, can I get a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay. Second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, engineering service agreement.
Yeah, so what I did for this one, this is a continuation of this, now that you've approved the engineering report, we should actually, now that I think about, we should have a resolution directing the engineer to prepare the plant and specs. Is there any issue to that? If I add that?
No, is it all goes together?
It all goes together.
Okay. So I use the same agreement as sixty-third street, this is basically sixty-third street on a lesser scale to the south. So we based it on a percentage of construction. The summary that I put together was, we have the preliminary engineering report is a lump sum five thousand, the preliminary design report is a lump sum fifteen thousand, that's where we get into some of the specifics of the intersection design and that type of the sewer and the water. The civil engineering design services are based on a, on a percentage of construction based on the, on the rate table that's attached to agreement. Electric on the right-of-way, we don't anticipate needing any right-of-way, that's why I kept it as an hourly, not to exceed, just because it's a seventy-foot corridor that's already been established through the, this is fourth addition. And then we have construction engineering, it's based on an eight percent estimate, and three forty-two is what it is based on the, that's what we put together, if it's less, comes in less.
Again, we don't have that to look at, so is it mirroring sixty-third agreement with the rates that are previously?
Yeah, I use the same rate table.
Because I, we approved that, we went through that with fine-tooth comb, so, okay, good.
Okay. All right, Jim, so what'd you want us to do here? Do you want us to do?
I wa, I would say disapprove the engineering services agreement, and then we'll do another one, separate to direct engineering for the plant and specs.
Okay, someone look for a motion for the engineering service agreement, the improvement?
I'll make that motion.
Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Sir, a second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, Jim, the third one?
The next one would just be to direct the engineer to prepare the plant and specifications so we can get, keep going forward with it.
Motion to direct engineering to prepare the plants and specifications related to water sewer storm and street improvement, District twenty twenty-three dash three.
Okay. Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Can we just a second? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Jim, you got the next one?
That's been uploaded in Teams.
Thank you.
The next one we have is a table item from the last meeting that we had on sanitary storm and street improvement, District twenty twenty-two dash four, Wall Avenue West from Cheyenne to version of the Cheyenne River. More information was added to that calendar to show in those eight days that they were working on, on other storm sewer items. The eight days that I believe that you had there were on the, was it the eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth? Is that what I remember correctly? Does that sound right?
It, no.
No.
It was from the eleventh to the... It was, there's, there was two weeks, there was ten days in there.
Yep, it was the eleventh to the twenty-fourth, I think.
I think so.
It was, because the eleventh is when the storm sewer was delivered, and the twenty-fourth was when they started working on the storm sewer, that's what it was, yeah.
So I wanted to know what the issue was.
So they were working on there, they were preparing, so they had two days in there of utility locates, that's potholing for utilities along Memory Lane, where they jack and board the crossing pipe on for drainage.
Oh, they had to pothole it?
They had to pothole those, because there's a lot of utilities along that, so that's what the utility locates are.
Okay.
On the fourteenth, they were installing a sanitary sewer manhole, and at the same time, they had split crew, they had a sub doing the boring of the storm sewer across Memory Lane, but they did have help out with that, was part of their contract. That Saturday, they did, the fifteenth, they were boring the storm sewer pipe, and they installed the sanitary manhole at a hundred and seventy-four feet of San Tramon. That week, they worked that Sunday, working on the boring of the water, the storm water pipe.
Yep.
And then on the seventeenth, you can see there was a conflict with the gas line, but they were started installing, actually installing the sanitary manholes, and some of these were deep in kind of a rough area to get around the utilities, so I questioned, like, they got one manhole done a day, and I'm like, well, it's deep and it's in around utilities, so, so there's that. And then the nineteenth was continuing to pothole those utilities, because that gas line conflict was starting in there, so they were with a jet trailer, a back trailer, trying to suck all that stuff out. You know, once they got through all that, the storm sewer was there. So they were working during that time, they weren't just sitting on their hands. And I keep hearing that there, that there was potential to bring two crews in, the stars didn't align, there wasn't enough room to get the two in there with the conflicts of all the utilities and whatnot, so that's.
This is the detail I needed, because there was a lot of questions surrounding what happened, how it happened, what took all the time. If they were potholing and using a back trailer, that takes care of the majority of the day, because I've done that work before, and I know how tricky it can be, not to mention the mess. It, it, it's integral, so, okay, that answers the questions I had, thank you.
Okay.
That's exactly what I needed, thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Anything else on this one?
No.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept a change order.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Sir, a second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so number twelve, this water sewer storm and street improvement, District twenty twenty-one dash five, Earlwood Third Edition, we've talked about this one in the past, just south of Little Grove, right off a hundred and seventeen. So kind of the same stuff we've talked about with Rivers Edge, Lost River Seven, all of those. So pretty much the same memo above reference project. Earlwood Third was developed by, was designed by the developer's engineer, not City Horace. Developer providing invoices for engineering work and likely reimbursed through the special assessment district. The design engineering of this was preliminary engineering work, topographical surveys, plant production specifications. They did also include work for plating, those costs are typically to the developer, not the special assessment district, so those were removed from it. The attached invoices are removed by, or reviewed by Brenton and myself. The highlighted items that they had had in this, in the green was plating, and we went through all that, you can see my check marks on there. And so they had a total cost of eighty-six thousand five hundred fourteen dollars, the plating worked out to twelve thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, so subtracting those through the design, seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nine, I missed, I missed a digit here, eight hundred and eighty, God, put me on the spot, I can't do math. Eighty-six, five one four, minus twelve, sixty-four. Seventy-three thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, so this project has been special assessed. I believe that the finance director says there's, there's money in there for this, so it's no additional, it's not atypical, but we've done.
So we removed the twelve thousand dollars. I'm reading the, I, I breezed through these emails earlier, I'm reading them a little more closely here now. Is that a plating variance? What's that twelve thousand dollars?
Twelve thousand goes to the developer, so we haven't, the city, the city hasn't reimbursed the developer for plating on any project yet. It's something that's a cost of the developer.
I agree.
To break that land up and make it developable, so.
And they, they're agreeable to removing that cost?
Our, our agreement identifies design reimbursement, so.
Yes-ish? I saw the argument, I saw the argument here, which is why I'm questioning it.
And that's why, in the past, plating has been removed out of all of them.
Yep. Stay with that standard.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Good eyes, guys.
Okay, any other questions on this one?
Nope.
Okay. Somebody wants to approve the reimbursement then?
Yep.
Okay. Somebody make a motion to approve the reimbursement.
So moved.
Okay, anyone makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jim, this is a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, carries. Jim, you got the next one, too?
I do. Yes, Mr. Mayor, so we have improvement District twenty twenty-nine dash seven, which is the connection to Casperell. What we have here is balancing change order number four, which decreases the original contract amount by a net of twenty-nine thousand six hundred seventy dollars, sixty-three cents. There was some issues with the pump, that the motor was underperforming in so much that the pump supplier came and got it and replaced both of the pumps in there. So we're waiting for that to get done before we brought this change order to you, that's why it's a little bit delayed, they just got that in here in the last couple of weeks or month, and we can get it on this, on this agenda. So pretty standard, decreasing twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Was this the one that had telematics in it? No?
Yeah, this is the one that had the, the telemetry with MicroCom.
Right.
For Casperell.
Did that get figured out?
Yes.
There was a pump issue?
Well, there was a couple of things. So there was, there's a plug valve in the, in the pit where there's a keyway.
Yep.
And the key fell out of the way, so it didn't, it didn't open.
Yep.
It shut, it didn't open. That got fixed by Dakota Pump.
Yep.
The other thing was getting Sweeney, because the city uses Sweeney controls.
Yes.
Casperell uses MicroCom controls, so there's Sweeney in the tower, MicroCom over there, and they're now talking.
We got them talking.
So the city doesn't necessarily have the ability to control Casperell's vault, because this is Casperell's vault and, and equipment, that's why it's got MicroCom in it.
Do we have access to the SCADA though?
But you can at least see what it's doing.
Okay.
Yes. You can see what it's doing, and then that's, that was the big thing, was being able to see what it, what it was doing, so.
You have a read-only versus a read, right condition.
We got the read-only.
Which is fine, as long as we can see it. Before, we couldn't even see the SCADA, which is a problem, so.
Right. And they had a couple of things to do as far as tidying up work, and they got that done, cleaning up the pit and some others, I shouldn't say the pit, but the vault, it's actually quite nice down in there. It's, it's, you know, don't use the pit, it's actually quite nice, but that's all, all been cleaned up and all ready to go, so this is just the next, the next step I want to get it cleaned up for the end of the year.
Got it. Motion to approve balancing change order number four.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Jim, you got one more?
Nothing's happened in the last two weeks.
Come on.
Moving dirt on Cobb, moving dirt on the other one, that's pretty much it.
Yep.
Come the next meeting, we'll talk about the design where we're at with those projects and the clothes of the other ones, but in effort in the last two weeks.
Yeah.
How about our little roundabout project?
What's that?
How about the little roundabout?
Oh, yeah, we could talk about that. So, last Wednesday, roundabout was closed down, contractor was able to get in, line up everything, and they were able to get in and start digging on Wednesday. They found two fittings, two mackerel fittings, not mackerel, they were Romac fittings, alphas, so they were restrained fittings, that were leaking like a sieve, and way more than anyone would have thought, considering how it would just bubble up at times. But once you took the pressure, or took the soil off of it, they just, they leaked like a sieve. So contractor was able to get down to them, they weren't, as, number one, they weren't as shallow as I thought, which was a good thing, because I was afraid that there maybe had been some freezing or something, but they were still eight-foot plus deep. They cut out the fittings, nothing visibly wrong with why they, why they were doing that. If you use a, like a, a Romac fitting that goes over two pipes to seal it off, if you use one that's for PVC to a transite pipe, or PVC to a cast iron pipe, they've got different gaskets in them that you'd have to take out, because the transite ACP pipe has a thicker wall thickness to seal that up. So I asked the question, did somebody take a seal out of there or anything? And no, they hadn't. This one was PVC to PVC. So both of those were just cut out, both of those fittings, because this is a double eight-inch force main, so they're laid two feet from each other. And those were taken out, pictures were taken, Romac has been notified of them.
I was going to say, do we have the manufacturer on notice?
Yep, yep, the Romac has been notified of it, just to see. The contractor that did the work was also the one who did the original work, and he wanted to make sure there was nothing he did.
Yep.
So they were not trying to damage anything when they took it out. The stars aligned, they got the pipe work all done on Wednesday. Thursday, they got it backfilled in the morning, Thursday afternoon, they got the concrete put back in. Friday, they got the color concrete put back in. So the weather was pretty good for that, our break was pretty good, it was over four thousand PSI in three days, so we opened it up on, on Monday. But we haven't seen any invoices from the contractor yet, and we haven't seen anything from, from Romac, as far as what that is. But I do believe the contractor has one, and the city's public works has the other of those two, just, just to have them in case they need them, and they kept them intact, they didn't take them apart, so.
We need to keep those, because that sounds as if it's some sort of a defect, and I'm more concerned about if it's not just these two, but what if it's a batch defect?
Well, and that's where, that's the question. So they were pressure tested when they were put in, the line is quite a long force main, so they had to cut in some valves and isolate it to get the test to pass, but it did pass a preliminary test before it was accepted, and here we are, five years later, or whatever it was, they were leaking, so just have to see, but that's what, that's what they found down there.
Do we have any other bends that are quite bad?
Well, there's tons of them on that line.
That, that, that's ninety degrees, wasn't it there?
Nope, that one was just a straight-to-straight, hundred and eighty, just seal up, yep, no bend, no nothing, it was just.
See, I thought that came in from the east on seventy-six.
It does, but the turn had already been made and it was headed north. So there was a boring underneath, there was a boring underneath seventy-sixth Avenue casing.
Yeah.
And where they cased it, put the pipe through, they laid open, cut up to it, put the fitting on there, put the two together that way. So lots of head scratching.
Yeah.
Lots of head scratching, but like I said, it worked out, you know, it was, things kind of worked out. Have we talked about the streetlights on seventy-sixth, on seventeen yet, County Road Seventeen?
No, go ahead.
Have you seen them? They're blue?
Yes.
So the Prince lights, yes, Prince, Prince Rogers Nelson Highway. So the public, those have a five-year warranty on them.
They're cool.
And, well, we've got them replaced, the new ones are in the shop.
Why? Why do you have to replace them? They don't like the blue?
Because the coating wore off of them.
Oh, you're kidding?
No, it's a known defect with that year.
Oh.
When you talk about manufacturer lot or runs.
Serial defect?
Serial defects.
Oh.
Cheyenne up by ninety-four has it.
Yep.
Thirteenth Avenue had it over by, fifty-second apparently has it, so they're under a five-year warranty, we're on year four of that warranty, so they didn't even really ask questions of them, I reached out to them, they said, how many do you have and where do you want them sent?
That's fair, I thought the blue was kind of cool, it's holiday, you know?
Well, so anyways, if anyone does comment on them, there are new ones in the shop, as part of the warranty though, city has to pay to put them up. The manufacturer stands by the head, but the city has to pay to put them up, so.
Oh, wow.
I don't know how that, how that all shakes out, but that's where it is, so, glad you reminded me, I forgot about that, and I had it on my notes too, the floodwater thing.
I've only seen one dender up there since we put the lights up.
Really?
Yeah, and normally there's like five by this time of year, so I'm feeling pretty good that people are at least seeing them or slowing down. I haven't had nearly the complaints that I've seen in the past about this corridor is so dark, it's so nice having light on the way up to the bridge there.
It is, and I've only seen one as well, so I'm glad.
Hopefully we save some insurance claims. Did we hear anything back on the feed point at Southdale for sixty-six? Forgot, yeah.
Yeah, I did.
It's okay, get back to me.
I had the feed point on Arrowhead third, which I talked about today, or, yeah, today at our staff meeting, and that's February, so I did gap that note.
It's okay, catch me on the next one.
The latest round for twenty-six and twenty-seven of TA grants were submitted to MetroCog, and they scored them last week, right?
Yep.
And then I think that one of them, you can, I'll give you the, I'll yield to, to the community development director.
Yeah, so we...
Since he doesn't get a...
I don't get a line.
Do you want a line?
Sure. I got stuff to talk about. So, we applied for two projects through the TA, the first one was a continuation of our County Road seventeen shared-use path, which would complete the section, so this one went north of eighty-first up to seventy-six, so that would give us around three miles of continuous shared-use path through this section, once we're done with that. The second was a branch from the facilities at seventy-sixth avenue to Brink Drive to start a shared-use network down seventy-sixth avenue. Both of those projects actually ended up scoring, we're in a four-way tie through TA for the top-ranked projects on that, so there's two of our projects, one Fargo's and one of Cass counties that went through there. Bicycle and pedestrian committee met, confirmed the scoring on those, the scoring went to TTC, who also confirmed those, and I believe those will be a policy board, just to confirm the scoring here coming up soon. What's different this year though is typically the bike and pet committee will score and then rank the projects per year for funding, and this year they've kind of walked back on that, so alls we did was confirm the scoring. Well, policy board will then meet and rank the projects and then assign the funding year. So, we'll have to probably meet with council members here to go over those projects and what that ranking looks like as he sits on the policy board, just to get him prepped for the, the battle of funding that will ensue for those. But we are sitting in a good position for a large amount of funding for both those projects in twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven.
Excellent.
Good job, Jase.
So, did you yield it back to Jim or?
Yeah, I'll yield it back to Jim, that was...
It was down to us, that's all I had.
Any questions for either Jase or Jim?
No, thank you both.
Yep, cool. All right, Brett, and you finally get to say something else here.
I'll try to keep it short, and I have one item related to this, but it's about upcoming meetings. The joy of holidays, we have in January and February, three of the four meetings that we have, we have conflicts because of holidays. So, on January first, that would be the first meeting date, obviously New Year's. January fifteenth, that'd be the second meeting date of January, is Martin Luther King Day. And then February nineteenth would be the second meeting date in February, that is President's Day. Just tackling one by one for the first, my suggestion for council would be we can cancel that meeting, the week, basically between now and, or, New Year's, we have some payday operations, but we can get by until having the second meet, until the second meeting date time, you know, meeting the third week of January. Also, the week between Christmas and New Year's, not much happens from people we're doing business with and whatnot, it's kind of a ghost town. So, that's my logic behind there for the first. If we did reschedule the meeting on the first, we could possibly meet on the second, that shouldn't be too much of an issue. The agenda, like I said, would be not much in the week away until the third week. The week of the, for the fifteenth, Stanley Township has this room on the sixteenth, that would be Tuesday. If we did meet on that date, I could confirm that with Todd Ellig, the, for Stanley Township. We would just be, gotta keep things moving so they could get in for their regular meeting time, I believe is at eight or eight-thirty.
I think it's eight thirty is what it is.
So, we'd basically need to be out about fifteen, twenty minutes before they start, so they have time to be able to kind of get settled in for their meeting. Otherwise, you could go with January seventeenth, which is a Wednesday. Typically do try to stay away from having meetings on Wednesdays, cause that's often a day for church services and stuff too, but, we can't make it work, it's not typically a huge conflict, but seventeenth is open, I did confirm that with fire. We looked at the eighteenth, but Snow Riders have this room on the eighteenth. So, do that one, and then for February, President's Day, it's kind of the same dynamic, Stanley Township meets on the twentieth, twenty-first, I believe this room would be available. So, those are your options there for the third week of February also. So, I'm looking to see what council would prefer to do. My suggestion would be for the first meeting, New Year's, cancel that one, the second one, if you don't want to have any potential conflict, cause it could very well be a bigger agenda, you could go on the seventeenth, that's a Wednesday.
Otherwise, we'd have the room until when? Cause we start at six, we'd have to be done by what?
We'd have to be done by about seven forty-five, three o'clock, right around that timeframe. If doable, we've done it before.
It'd be two hours.
Yeah, Stanley Township does meet at eight o'clock, so.
At eight o'clock, so we need to be done at the latest by about seven forty-five, I mean, we have been able to knock through an agenda fairly quickly for those. Issue set, you gotta keep it moving.
I'd say this, if we want to do that though, we try and keep things moving along, but if we do hit a snag, we'll have to table it.
You could do that too.
So, we're not just...
I don't have a preference, so, whatever you want.
Yeah, I'm okay on the sixteenth.
I'm gonna be traveling on the sixteenth, so I'll try to make it, but there is no guarantee for me.
We could try and call you, if, if it's possible, we could call you, otherwise, if you can't make it, you can't make it.
Okay.
And I, I remember you did mention you would be all that, you didn't know if you had a conflict that Monday even, for regular, would have been the regular meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, and I'm fine not having the first meeting in the month, that's, that's fine. Do the seventeenth and then do the Tuesday and February.
The seventeenth or the sixteenth?
So, in February, the original meeting date is the nineteenth, so you'd be looking at...
The twentieth.
Just confirming to make sure I have my dates correct.
Right.
Yeah, originally it's the nineteenth, so you're looking at Tuesday the twentieth or Wednesday the twenty-first. So, if you're just following the same approach, you could go with the twentieth and...
Corey, forgive me, are we talking about just moving the Monday meetings to Tuesdays then?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so the sixteenth and the twentieth?
Okay, so, and I have canceled the meeting, first meeting of January. And for the second meeting in January, and the second meeting date of February, move to sixteen and twenty, January sixteenth, January twentieth. I will coordinate with Stanley Township and confirm that there's not an issue there, we haven't had an issue with them in the past to do that, so.
And there'll be a normal meeting on February fifth?
February fifth would be a normal meeting.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That's all I have then.
Okay, so, on the portfolios, I got stated the city's coming up with the FM chamber on January eleventh. It'll be an interesting format this year, because they're not giving out canned questions, it'll be pretty much ad hoc from the floor, so it'll be kind of interesting. Some people won't be able to read them right off the, off the top, so they'll have to be improvising. So, anyway, that'll be kind of interesting, and actually I prefer that format, we'll see how that goes. Then on that afternoon, the Cass County Leader Roundtable, we get together, so we'll have more conversations about some upcoming political things going on in the metro and state. On the eighteenth, I have the HBE banquet in the evening, Paul's gonna give me one hell of a presentation for, right? Yeah.
How your work's going?
Exactly, exactly, so, that's all I've got. Sarah, what do you got?
I don't have anything much, I've already touched on the items that were in my portfolio with Jim today, so.
Naomi, what do you got?
Um, I've been struggling to meet with Jase, between illnesses in my household and just the holidays, it's been a little nutso, so my apologies, Jase. The other night at planning and zoning, they had a resident ask that we start advertising, much like we do city council meetings, for e-notifications, I don't think it's an option, have you guys talked with Paul about any of that yet?
Not yet, it's on my list.
You talked to Bobby.
Brett talked about it.
So, I, I guess, and what I'm hoping for is that we can actually start putting planning and zoning meetings up notifications, just like we do with our council meetings, putting the agenda packets on and putting the recordings on as well. Just because that resident said it would be nice to know when those meetings are as well, so I thought we could add that to the e-notification, so people can sign up for that, and then let people know it's an option too, Paul, on our Facebook page, just so they know that it, it got updated. Oh, and then our ordinance has been to planning and zoning, so we'll be seeing that soon?
Probably the one in January.
The one in January, I thought it went really well, I, I don't know what you think, but I thought it went well, so. I'm looking forward to getting that to council and getting that approved, but otherwise, that was all I had, I think.
Okay, Jeff?
I don't have a whole lot for MetroCog, otherwise for operations, I believe I have a meeting coming up with Brenton at some point. I don't know if it was this week or when you plan on having it. Finalize some personnel updates and other than that, that was it.
After this.
Okay, oh yeah, that's right, after this, got it.
Okay, all right, if there's nothing else, then we're gonna do the executive session thing, so executive session, I presume, to NDCC four four dash oh four dash nineteen point one, to discuss negotiating strategy for the purchase of real property, need somebody to bring us into executive session.
I'll do that, I'll make that motion.
Okay, if anyone makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Oh, sir, got it.
Sarah does a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, say five minutes, get things set up, and then we'll go into it. Okay?
Lucas, your turn.
Paul, looking forward from the council's motion directing Brenton I to pursue negotiation for the purchase of real property.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Sarah, a second, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, sounds good, your motion carries, okay, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion right now. Yep.
Can I get a second?
I'll do it.
Naomi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect, we're done.
Bye.